Everybody to the Daily City Recreation Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, February twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. To start off the meeting, we have a few announcements. COVID-nineteen announcement for public meetings pursuant to Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-three-E. Members of the Daily City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream at bit.ly slash D C F E B two-two or on local channel twenty-six on Comcast. For public participation, there are two ways to submit public comments. One, send written comments by four P M. on meeting day, and two, join to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email active@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item, as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M. will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four P M. will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission members following the public meeting. Comments are not read aloud into the record. To speak at a meeting via Zoom, join through the link on our public agenda. Zoom will require an email address and name. The name entered will be visible online and will be used to notify you that it is your turn to speak. You may also join by visiting zoom.us/join. Enter meeting ID eight-four-one-three-two-eight-six-six-zero-four-four, then enter email address and name. The November first, two thousand twenty-one Special Recreation Commission meeting may also be accessed by telephone by dialing one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-six-eight-three-three. Enter meeting ID eight-four-one-three-two-eight-six-six-zero-four-four, then press pound. When you would like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you'll need to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum, and speakers may only comment once per item. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. The city will not be providing technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the livestream of the meeting on the city's virtual meeting website at bit.ly slash D C F E B twenty-two. Availability of public records. All public records for an open session item on this agenda, which are not exempt from disclosure pursuant to the California Public Records Act. They're distributed to a majority of the legislative body will be available for public inspection at the City Clerk's Office, City Hall, located at three-three-three Ninetieth Street, Daily City during normal business hours, at the same time that the public records are distributed or made available to the legislative body. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office of the City Clerk at nine-nine-one-eight-zero-seven-eight as soon as possible. This meeting is now called to order, and we will start with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have our roll call.
Chair Luna?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Paniza?
Here.
Commissioner Anoy?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
So next up, we'd like to welcome our city council members who are joining us today to facilitate the oath of office to our new commissioners joining us today. So I'd like to first turn over the agenda over to Councilmember Justin Manolo.
Thank you so much, Chair Luna, for your leadership and for all of the commissioners and staff on here. I want to thank each and every one of you for your dedication and your commitment to supporting our community through the programs that you all do with Daily City Recreation. And so, without further ado, I'd like to provide the oath of office to Mr. Hamilton Anoy.
Hello.
So at this time, if you please, you raise your right hand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Hamilton Anoy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manolo, and welcome to Commissioner Anoy. And next, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Luna. It's great to see everyone. So exciting. And then now, Chair Luna, you will be having more people that will be more excited to do great things in our community. And thanks to all of you for wanting to serve our community and amongst with this great staff in our recreation. Couldn't be better, not because you see great things on the horizon with all of you together. So with that, I will honorably and humbly swear and the next commissioner. Okay, so you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so repeat after me and raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Saul Miranda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Sorry, my eyes are watering. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Recreation Commission and to all of you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Di Giovanni, and welcome to Saul Miranda, or Commissioner Miranda. So welcome to the commission. Now that all of our commissioners are now officially part of the commission, we'd like to move on to our next agenda item, which is the reorganization of the commission. So first, we'd like to, first up would be for the election of the chair. So at this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the position of chair. And so, do we have any nominations? I have one, so I'd like to go ahead and nominate Nate Ortiz for Chair of Recreation Commission. Are there any other nominations at this time? Okay. If there are no nominations at this time, I'd like to do a roll call vote. So I will call each commissioner's name for their, to get their vote. Commissioner Anoy?
Yes, I second that.
Commissioner Miranda?
I do too. I second.
Commissioner Ortiz?
I second that.
Commissioner Paniza?
Yes, I agree. I second that.
And I also put in my vote, so we have a majority vote. For Nate Ortiz as our new chair. Congratulations, Nate.
Thank you, everybody.
And the second reorganization is for the election of the vice chair. At this time, I'd like to call for any nominations for the vice chair.
I have a nomination. I would like to nominate Christina Luna for vice chair.
Thank you for the nomination. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we can confirm through a roll call vote. Once again, I'll call each commissioner's name. Commissioner Anoy?
I second that.
Commissioner Miranda?
I second.
Commissioner Ortiz, or Chair Ortiz?
Yes, I vote yes.
Commissioner Paniza?
Yes, I vote yes as well.
And I vote for myself as well, so I accept the vice chair role. So thank you, everybody. So now, at this time, I'd like to turn over the rest of the agenda to our new chair, Nate Ortiz.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Moving forward with the agenda, everybody. Can we get an approval of this week's agenda? Those in favor, say hi.
I approve.
Cool. And can we get a second?
I second.
Cool, awesome. And now, moving forward, pool of the minutes. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
I second.
Awesome, awesome. And moving on to the director's report, we have senior services information. Take it away, please.
Before Ann goes on and the senior services staff goes on, I just wanted to give a little overview, and I'm super, super excited to see five commissioners staring at me, and I can't wait to, at some point, come in person and have this just vibrant young group coming aboard. I know quite a few of you, very excited about it. And the director's report is going to focus specifically on the senior services area, and specifically, I know most of you know, but when the COVID hit, we're almost going to be two years into this, most, everything that we had shut down. The only area that came back to life, almost in a week's time, was the senior services area, specifically to serve the senior population with senior lunches and providing that in a way that we had never done before. And that was through home delivery and through a grab-and-go program. I'm very, very proud of all of the Recreation Division, and I wanted to highlight this group specifically because they have done everything in their power to make sure that seniors do not go without food. And I think that's very important. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ann Opal and Angelo.
Thank you, Denise, and councilmembers and commissioners for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Ann Cooney, and I am the Active Adult Senior Services Supervisor. And as Denise mentioned, I'm co-presenting tonight with Angelo Agnasio and Opal Fuller. We're here really representing, you know, Active Adult Senior Services is really touched by every part of recreation, so we're honored to be representing all our colleagues, no matter what site they're at or what program they're with. We're all reaching our intergenerational families and our community members of all ages. So my presentation will be quick and informal. I hope that Opal and Angelo will jump right in, and then they will follow with their own remarks. And of course, please commissioners, if you have a question, jump in as well. Edgardo, is it okay to share my screen? Okay, let me give this a shot here. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Let's see. There it is. Okay. So Active Adult Senior Services. We like to share our mission. We don't like it to be something that's stored on a shelf or in a binder somewhere, that it's a living, breathing part of what we do. And our current mission is to enhance the quality of life and promote wellness by providing social, educational, and recreational opportunities to all adults fifty years and older. We're very glad, especially out of the Dolger Center, to be celebrating forty-two years of service out of Dolger. The Dolger Senior Center opened in nineteen eighty. And just a quick note, the Daily City was designated as an age-friendly city in July of two thousand twenty. And I'm not, we're not presenting much on that tonight, but we wanted to make sure to mention it, and we can always, are happy to talk about it and answer questions. Daily City Recreation Services, and I've mentioned this to commissioners who've heard me speak in the past, Recreation Services is the literal home of fun and games in our community. But when it comes to what we've experienced in the last couple of years with the pandemic, issues of loneliness and isolation have crept in, and we want you to know that as much as we are about fun and games, we've taken the work of fun and games very seriously. A statistic that we talk about quite a bit in Active Adult Senior Services is that, at any age, loneliness is just as lethal to a person's physical health, not just their emotional health, but their physical health as smoking fifteen cigarettes a day. And people who are experiencing loneliness over time are fifty percent more likely to pass away prematurely than those with healthy social relationships. And Daily City Recreation Services, as Jen talks about, Gendre talks about, is community, and it's about social relationships. In Daily City now, this date is a little bit old, but over twenty-five thousand of our, members of our community are sixty years old or older. It's the fastest-growing segment of our population. And San Mateo County states that by the year two thousand thirty, so not too far away, one in four San Mateo County residents will be sixty-five or older. So Daily City is already on that trajectory. Quickly here, this is the current activity schedules at the Lincoln Park Community Center, which Angelo will talk a lot more about, and our schedule at the Dolger Senior Center. What I'd like you to take away from this is where I'm going to focus in the next couple of minutes, and that is, most of the activities, the lion's share of the activities and classes you see here are led by our volunteers. And so tonight, I want to really shine a light on the volunteers that helped us, once our city manager's office, our public works, custodial, once everyone in the city helped us open our doors at Dolger Senior Center in Lincoln Park and War Memorial and our clubhouses. It was our volunteers that helped us safely and usher the community back inside for all the wonderful things that happen at our community centers. So our centers were able to safely reopen in September and have been open ever since. So some of the volunteers, I just want to shine a light on tonight. So Marion Mann, a longtime leader in our community, has been, does many things at Dolger. She is chiefly known these days for keeping people happy and enjoying the bocce court that's here at the Dolger Senior Center and does a wonderful job. She's here with another fellow volunteer, Frank LaFontaine, who over the years has kept the bocce court up to snuff. It's covered with oyster shells by our parks and public work staff, and it's a wonderful, wonderful facility. Made a little note here that we have a regular bocce player, Rose McDeleavy, who turned one hundred and one years old in January, on January third. And she would be very happy that I was sharing that because she made sure every one of us knew exactly the day that she hit one hundred and one. We have a vibrant ping-pong program here as well. Angelo will speak to Lincoln. Mi Wong, who lives down the coast a bit at Edmund Lee, are both wonderful volunteers. They often sacrifice their own time being able to play ping-pong so that other community members can play. My colleague Andrea can speak to this. There are typically about thirty players a day at morning and afternoon sessions that are here three times a week, actually, four days a week now, playing ping-pong and having a great deal of fun. While they're waiting to play ping-pong, they're also sometimes playing hacky-sack or mahjong in between games, and it's been a joy to hear their laughter and have them back at the center. We have some great dance classes, including a tap dance for beginners taught by Ann Pacheco. Ann turned ninety-one recently and is just an outstanding teacher and a great, has a great passion for the arts. Intermediate tap is taught by Yuko Franklin, and Yuko's here with some of her students in the photo that was taken from Recreation Services Holiday Program. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you can go find it on Facebook. It was a wonderful program, and they did a beautiful job. May Lynn does, she leads our Tai Chi here at Dolger and also a freestyle program on Thursday. And this is just a wonderful shot of a beautiful day soon after we opened in September. Volunteer Gloria Solis held us together in community through COVID by leading a virtual sing-along program on Zoom twice a month. She highlighted folk songs and rock songs and love songs and holiday songs and songs of the nineteen twenties. And if someone had told me a couple of years ago that one of my favorite activities would be muting myself during a sing-along on something called Zoom, I wouldn't have really been able to imagine what they were talking about, but it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. And especially during shelter-in-place, and while many of our community members were truly homebound, Gloria held us together and helped us really enjoy each other's company. Gloria's now teaching two hours a week a ukulele class for people of all stages, beginners to advanced players. And it's a wonderful part of our Thursdays here at Dolger. We have a terrific group, Grupo Latina, with Sandra Solis Johnson and friends. Sandra's here in the middle, this very regal, wonderful, generous woman who was formerly a staff member, a Daily City Recreation staff member. This group comes together to celebrate their cultures, but also they'll be talking to each other about safety, emergency preparedness, nutrition, just a really vibrant group. Of all these volunteers, most of them have many, many years of engagement here, and I want to give a nod to Donna Pineda, who was my predecessor and here many years, who really nurtured and inspired these relationships so that, again, when our doors opened, all these wonderful people were here to lead the activities. Our library, the Eleanor J. Charleston Library, which isn't officially a part of our Daily City Library system, but is a wonderful book lending and sharing spot here at the Dolger Center, is open now, thanks to volunteers who are willing to be there. They've been, they're both proudly here. Andrea Adamson and Jean Fukunawa have their masks on. They've been, without ever becoming the mask police, have been an important part of keeping everyone safe while they've been here on campus and wearing their masks until last week, when we were able to relax that a little bit. We have two billiard, two pool tables now in our billiard rooms. The billiard room will be, has been open three days a week. It'll open up four days a week, starting in March, and it's a wonderful socialization opportunity, especially for the guys. It's nice to have something that the men in particular want to come out and do together, but everyone's welcome. We have Linda Gould, who is an attorney here in Daily City, who's formerly been a contract instructor with Daily City Recreation Services, who at this time in her life has decided, as she's retiring, she wants to give even more back to her community. So she'll be volunteering, teaching Stretch with Yoga and Chair Yoga. Al Olson, an extraordinary artist, who is here teaching three days a week now, two classes as a contractor and one as a volunteer. And he's just an amazing teacher, and his classes are always filled to the max. There's not a chair available in any of his classes, just very popular. He also was able to stay in touch with a lot of his students and the community members during COVID. And we've got many emails and phone calls, people thanking Al and thanking Daily City Recreation for getting them started in art and having that be something that sustained them during the pandemic. We have our book club back and going, thanks to Linda Tom, meets once a month. We have Canasta and Mahjong going on Fridays all day, a little bit of both all day. And Pat is doing a wonderful job leading that, picking up from another volunteer who is undergoing some health challenges. Yet another wonderful class, a big band line dance class with Susan that has grown so big, it's going to have to be moved out of Room Five and into our larger dance studio, Room fourteen in March. Needle soaks and pins with Laura Hollander and Gulshan. Terrific experience in our Room One, where we have a dozen sewing machines and all kinds of wonderful equipment. And happy to say, this is an activity also just enjoyed as much by the men who are part of it now as the group of women that you see here in the photo. Origami with Shirley. Shirley also been a longtime volunteer. And when she's not doing origami, Shirley is teaching knitting. She also had a long stint as a volunteer with our libraries, where she taught knitting. We have a quilting class that'll be starting up in March with Catherine. And we have A A R P tax aid here, the volunteers here. There are five tax preparers, IRS and A A R P-trained tax preparers here at Dolger. And I think Angelo will be talking a little bit more, but between our two sites, and I want to thank Gina as well, who allowed this program to come to Westlake this year from War Memorial, where she has hosted it for some time. We hope to serve close to five hundred people with free tax preparation services. We've had a wonderful set of relationships now with Unitec College School of Nursing, Samuel Merritt University College of Nursing, and San Francisco State University College of Nursing. Their students doing mental health and community health rotations as they get ready to graduate, most are completing their Bachelor of Nursing degrees. They've been making wellness calls and home visits to our seniors, Unitec, throughout COVID, and Samuel Merritt and San Francisco State University coming on board with Daily City Recreation now as we emerge from the pandemic. But just a wonderful experience for them academically and for our seniors to have these wonderful students bringing expertise to them on all topics from fall prevention and medication management to isolation and loneliness. It's a really wonderful partnership. We're grateful for. So not out to not only our volunteers, but we're very lucky on the rec team to have Leslie DeBridge as our contract class administrator. And not only does Leslie find the most professional and expert contract instructors for community members of all ages, but she and Jen also have, throughout COVID, provided this wonderful virtual class every Tuesday, the Go for Life Functional Fitness Class. Here's kind of a picture of them. You can see the smiles and the enjoyment. And this has just been a life, literal lifesaver and sustainer for many members of our community. Leslie was able to bring Go for Life back in person recently. And here's some very recent photos of folks being able to be back here safe in the Pacelli Event Center. And there's Leslie down at the bottom. A couple contract instructors that are also wonderful volunteers. Jeanette Feinberg is a dance instructor, but Opal might talk a little bit about her. She also volunteers in our meal program. And we've been very lucky in the last two years to have Alan Isidro with us as well, doing some great classes that you can see. As soon as he brought them to Daily City, they're very, very popular. So at this point, thank you. Thank you for letting me shine a light on our volunteers. This, Senior Services absolutely volunteer-led and driven and inspired. And before COVID, Dolger alone had over two hundred volunteers. We have over a hundred. And before COVID, Dozier alone had over two hundred volunteers. We have over a hundred back, re-registered with us. And we're just extremely grateful to them and, and to our council, to our recreation commissioners as volunteer leaders as well. We appreciate you all. So I'm going to stop talking right now and turn this over to Opal. Few slides to, to guide Opal through her, her offerings.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. So Anne pretty much touched on everything we do at Dozier. I have been running the senior nutrition program as a full-time employee for three years now. The last two years has been very trying, but we have made the best of it. We turned our program from a contract sit-down meal every day to a grab and go program, a home delivered program. And now we are a grab and go daily hot meal program. I currently have five volunteers that help me per day. They have allowed me to have some of my volunteers back, which is great. I miss them so much. And we are doing our best to serve the community. I'm gonna have to pat ourselves on the back and say we have been doing a wonderful job for the last two years. It started with just the kitchen staff and all the full-time recreation employees when we couldn't allow, when we weren't allowed to have our volunteers back in. And we've done a great job. At our height, we were making over five thousand meals a month. Now I'm just down below just four thousand meals a month. I mean, but that's still great. And we're still serving. It's been really fulfilling. I'm sure for everyone involved, just to see the look on the senior spaces and the excitement and just how grateful they are that we've been able to keep them, you know, so secure with food. We have other things that are coming up. Soon we'll be opening up a pantry. And we're gonna be stepping into our own pantry, but we'll be serving the senior communities, maybe some that may be a little insecure with food or maybe a little, you know, underserved with money. So we'll be serving them soon in a full-blown pantry provided to us by Second Harvest. This photo here is just one of my favorite persons to work with, Egardo. This was just in the height of our transition when we were starting to serve these meals. And as you can see, the way they're laid out, we would have five tables with over a hundred and fifty meals on each table, getting those meals prepared for the week. Every Monday we deliver. Every Monday we deliver and every Monday people will come up and pick up their meals at that time. But now at this time, we're still delivering on Mondays, but every day we're getting eighty people or so at Dozier to pick up a hot meal. Angelo was hosting thirty people a day picking up a hot meal. And we're also hosting a hundred and three people from the home deliveries daily. And that all comes out of Dozier Senior Center. So I'm proud of what we've been doing, proud of the recreation staff, and I'm proud to be on board. So that's pretty much what's going on with us. This is a menu. This is a monthly menu that they get every month, showing what the daily meal is. We also offer some nutritional education and we also in-person education when we come back to in-person. These menus are created by me, but they're made to look so good by Egardo. And also come April fourth, that's when we plan to come back together again and try to open up and have in-person contract lunch again, you know. It's been really safe. We've done, we've done a really safe two years, but now I think it's time for them to have some socialization back in to be able to see their friends. They've been really good for these last two years. I know it's been a tough time on some of the seniors, most of all. And here are some testimonials I see from some of my, the people who've been eating with us and some who live out of state. I mean, it's, it's been great. I've never seen that one that says, "Thank you to Chef Opal for a fantastic meal." It's been great. I appreciate my job. It's been fulfilling and I just plan on doing more. I plan on offering more. Plan on trying to open up Dozier's lunch program to more and reach as many people as possible. I know there's still some people out there in Daily City that may not know we're there, but our goal is to reach every senior and try to offer them the most we can from Dozier Senior Center. And I thank you all. Oh, these are Measure Q funding. So now we have new tables and chairs in our Dozier Cafe. You're really gonna have to come down one time and check out our cafe. It's very nice, very nice building. And that's what I've been doing. And thank you all for your time.
Before I turn it over to Angelo, I just wanted to say, on behalf of everyone in Recreation Services, save the date, Saturday, April twenty-third. Denise Brown has reserved the whole of Westlake Park for what will be an open house celebrating our Daily City seniors. We're still looking for a formal name. We're talking about Bring Grandma and Grandpa to the Park Day, but it's also very much going to be a day where every spot in, in Westlake Park, including all the rooms at Dozier, Angelo will be here with volunteers and programs from Lincoln and, and Gina here with programs from War Memorial, programs from Bay Shore, will be highlighting all of the programs that, and activities and fun things that serve our older adults in Daily City. So save the date, Saturday, April twenty-third. Just thank you commissioners and I'll turn it over to Angelo.
All right. Thank you, Anne. And if I could share my screen. It says I'm disabled from sharing.
Should be good now.
All right. All right. Are you guys able to see the screen? All right. Do you guys see the presentation?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll also keep mine. Mine's not too long. It's pretty short. But just to highlight, so I'm Recreation Services Supervisor and I oversee the Lincoln Community Center and you know, unless what you see there are, are the staff who are a part of the team and just want to be able to recognize them as, you know, without them. I don't know what I would do without them. And I really appreciate their, their hard work and commitment they've done through all these years, especially during the pandemic. And to the next slide, some of the programs and services at Lincoln are programs as we have line dance, Tai Chi, Kapihon to Lincoln is, is basically kind of like a chat time where they can kind of just go and talk. And what's really unique about the Kapihon program is that it's a hybrid program where there's people on Zoom and also people in person that are meeting together to kind of just socialize. And then it's also partnered with Tessie from Senior Peer Counseling with Peninsula Family Service. Another class is very active is Ballroom and Folk Dance and Ping Pong as well. And then a lot of, some of the services we provide, as they've, Anne mentioned too, we have the Grab and Go Program, Emergency Meals. Our staff would also assist with doing home-delivered meals on, on days where it's needed. We have a free groceries with Second Harvest Silicon Valley. And what it is, is we partner with a local grocer who provides donations to kind of share with the community. And we also, oh, I'm sorry. Free groceries is a kind of similar to what you see at Dozier, where we were serving meals. So we're now bringing it back to Lincoln, this time as a walk-up service, not a drive-through. And Grocery Rescue is what I explained before with a partnership with groceries. And then our AARP Tax Preparation. And on the next page, so some statistics that you could see is for our programs for Ballroom, we average about twenty-one to twenty-five people every Thursday. And we have a total of thirty-nine enrolled. Our International Music Line Dance, which is on Mondays and Fridays, we have an average attendance of sixteen to twenty with fifty-five total enrolled. And then our Kapihon Program, we have about seven to eight that come in-house. And then about two to four Zoom participants every Tuesday with a total of thirty enrolled. And then Ping Pong is Monday and then Wednesday through Friday, which we average about twelve to fourteen people playing. And we have about forty-four people total enrolled. And then on Tai Chi's, we have it on Monday, Wednesday and Friday with twenty-five to thirty people a day. And then a total of fifty-six enrolled. And then with the services are grab and go. So far from July first, all the way till February of two thousand and twenty-two at Lincoln, we've served over seven thousand meals. And as Anne and Opal mentioned, we are serving thirty people daily. It's the max that we can provide. And we're seeing if there's possibly, we can serve more. And our free groceries, which is on the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month, we are looking to serve at least a hundred and fifty households. Every distribution, providing at least fifty pounds of food every time they come and visit. And then with our AARP Tax Preparation, we have over one hundred sixty appointments already and we're fully booked. It's a hot item. And for Lincoln, that's, that's pretty much it. Usually, well, we're gonna end this presentation for senior service with a video. It was with the help of Derek and the marketing team. We took some clips here and there from Lincoln and Dozier. And we put a video together, figured you can see, not, not only are we sharing through words, but you can also see through, through video. So I'm gonna play the video and hope you enjoy it. All right. So that's it for our video. And I believe that ends our presentation for Active Adult Senior Services.
If I can, if I can, thank you, Chair. I just want to add one more thing, just a shout out to gender because this takes federal funding, subsidy, federal funding, county funding, grants, paperwork, invoices, spreadsheets, coordination, and we all are grateful to Jen for being the leader of our, the Active Adult Senior Service Program and, and all the administration and all the patience and all the creativity that she gives to staff and volunteers. So, and Denise too, of course, but we just wanted to really thank Jen for what is often very behind the scenes, but absolutely crucial. And thank you all. Thanks again for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Anne, Opal and Angela and Jennifer too, for all the behind the scenes work. Opal, two years, two years of the Grab and Go Program, surviving the COVID and all the situations. I'm so happy for you that in April you get to bring everybody back together.
Yes, it will be nice. It will be very nice. Thank you.
And Angelo, every time, I don't know how you're able to pack in every, all those programs and resources for, in your small facility at Lincoln Park, especially after you getting the, the new court redone. I'm seeing like a new vibe over there at the park. It's always cool. Things are moving there. So yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, our, our team there is, it's excited and, you know, Lincoln's looking to try to create programs for, for all ages, not just, you know, it's youth, adults, seniors and you know, and just we're, we're thankful for the opportunity to be able to create programs like this. And, you know, we're also thankful for the community to really trust us to, you know, have their programs here and feel safe and, you know, and just like what Anne mentioned, loneliness, you know, we're, we're conquering that by, by having our strong community here.
Yeah, I just, I just want to add that I'm super touched by all of these programs. And it's just amazing because, you know, I think there's still a lot of our community that doesn't know about these programs and what happens behind the scenes. And I just have to say that, I mean, this team just has, I'm just so touched because I, I, I know that it's not easy. And I know that all of you have such a big heart. And so it's just amazing and helping our seniors get through this like is amazing. And I'm just really impressed by, by everything. So I'm excited to, to see everybody in April come together.
All right. Moving on to the next item of our agenda, introductions for new Recreation Services coordinators and senior service specialists.
Thank you, thank you. Before we go to that little piece, because I want to kind of trail into it, I do want to touch base on what Angelo said and what Opal said about food. Because I know that you all are well aware that we were food distribution for quite a while in the back parking lot here at Westlake Park. And we ended our tenure there in December, but it was because we wanted to transition back to the neighborhoods. And one of the opportunities we received was through Second Harvest in providing a food pantry here at Dozier Senior Center. Prior to the food distribution and COVID hitting, we were at Lincoln, we were at Taglia and we were at Lawson Hall. When COVID hit, Bay Shore became the hub for one of the food distribution areas as well as here. And we wanted to go back to Lincoln, which Angelo took on that role. We wanted to go back to Taglia, which we're getting in place. So currently we have a program at Bay Shore, we'll have a program at Lawson. And then we will have a program at Lincoln and the food pantry to serve the seniors on this, on this side. So we, we're super excited to get back into the neighborhood and bring the community back into the neighborhood so that it's not as overwhelming and that they can walk to where they're going or, or access it a little easier than dealing with what we would have a thousand people coming down here to Westlake Park. So we're, we're, we're trying to get back slowly and surely into what we were before. And the community has been very patient and flexible. So we really appreciate that because we have to keep our focus on, you know, serving that community in the capacity that we need to do. And the second part of it, which transitions into this next piece is, thank you to the city council for giving us Measure Q funds, not, not just two of the coordinators that I'm going to introduce are positions that we received through Measure Q funds. As well, we have received five hundred thousand dollars for senior services. And two of the senior services specialists that you'll be introduced to are also thanking, because of Measure Q funds. The other two coordinator positions are because Angelo was promoted and we had a retirement. So we have six new staff, four of which have been part-time employees for us for a very long while. They probably together, four of them have about, about as many years as I have in the city total. So it's, it's very exciting to be able to offer full-time. And it was a promotional area, but offer that full-time to well-deserving employees that have worked for us for many years. And so I am going to And so I am going to pick names out of my head so that they can introduce themselves to you. Because I want you to see those people that are frontline, those people that are dealing with the community. And you'll get a chance to meet the rest of the recreation staff in different settings throughout the Recreation Commission meetings that we will have upcoming. But I thought this was a great opportunity to let them shine. They get two minutes to shine, no more than. And I'm counting. So we're gonna start off with a little water. And so Brian Si is going to lead us. Brian?
Hi, my name is Brian. Thank you guys for having me. Um uh the city of Daly City has been a part of my life. Um pretty much the entire life. Um I was in aquatics, so I learned how to swim when I was five. Um with Daly City and then I joined the swim team. And then worked for the city of Daly City when I was fifteen. So I've been with. Working part-time for fifteen years with the city of Daly City and then um this is my sixteenth year. Uh so right now, I'm in aquatics under Chris Mariano and mainly. And I am working um with Gina of. On the Teen Into Ship program. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Very good. I liked it. And because we're gonna stay with the bees, we're gonna go with Brian Flowers.
Hello, good evening. Um so my name is Brian Flowers. I've been working on and off for the city for about fourteen to fifteen years. I'm also a PE teacher. At Thomas Edison Elementary School. Um I have my hands in multiple areas. Uh youth basketball, baseball. Uh I'm starting a teen program at Westlake Park with uh David Zetzer. Uh it's called the Teen Zone. It's a safe place for the teens to come and hang out. Um it's a place for them to do their work. Um I also have uh, we also have Todd Gym coming back, which I'm very excited about. And we're also trying to get open gym basketball for adults uh in the early uh early morning. Not early morning, but mid-morning to uh early afternoon. Um and I'm also starting a cooking session with the um. The teen program where I'll do a cooking, a four-week cooking, excuse me, a four-week cooking session with five teens. And I'm doing that uh twice a day. And I also have a cookbook that uh I started, uh David Zetzer's. Um really influenced me about putting out a cookbook um and keep adding to it every time I do my cooking class. Um so I will share the link when um that is finally finished and I hope my two minutes are up and it's very nice seeing all you guys. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Brian. But next we will be uh hearing a little bit about Derek Chu.
Uh hi, everyone. Uh I'm Derek Chu. Um I started working with the city of Daly City in twenty thirteen. Uh in aquatics. Um now that I'm a recreation services coordinator, I'm currently working uh with marketing. So if you've seen anything on our YouTube channel, on our social media, uh that was done by the marketing team. And I am also working with Angelo at Lincoln Community Center. Um and I look forward to working with all of you more. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. And last but not least, Mr. Jeffrey Prangin.
Hi, hello, everyone, uh commissioners and council members. I'm Jeff Prangin. Uh I started recreation aquatics when I was five years old, uh had cousins that taught me. Um as well as Andrea, that we'll meet uh later on. I haven't seen her for twenty-five years, so it was, you know, great to see her again. Um so I have cousins, I have family sisters, uh my, like I said, cousins that have been the recreation department. For many, many years. Um I've been with the department for nearly twenty years. And you know, just sharing this moment with um Saul and Hamilton. Just wanna let you guys know that these young men were in my programs way back when um Hamilton, I remember. You know, football game and he he was like crying and it's like, just hit the guys and just play hard and like, I don't care if we lose like. Um and it it just showed the kind of person that he is to be where he is right now. Um just. I love his family, his life story. Same thing with Saul. Um he's been in Basra community. I'm still there for fifteen years and um oh, it's just a blessing to see them to be the people who they are. So this is why I'm here. Um I'm bringing back, I wanna bring back Futsal, um first Saul and all his friends to come by. Open gym, uh same thing with open uh basketball, volleyball, everyone froze. But yeah, um so I also do uh Bayshore Aces, uh after-school recreation program with Gina. Have been doing the food services. Uh as well as the food distribution at Bayshore. So I I'm all, I'm all over the place, special events. You can find me anywhere. Um so uh thank you guys.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And of course, we're batting up at the end of the lineup here with Karen and Andrea. Both of them are new to the senior services specialist. This is a new position, never had it um with the city. Uh these two amazing women will be leading the force on a citywide level for senior services. Um they're gonna start their tenure here at Dolger Senior Center to support uh and through the process. And they've done a great job thus far um and are going to continue. So I'm gonna let Andrea talk first.
Oh boy. Um let's see, I am a Daly City kid. I grew up here. I started with City of Daly City back in the. Okay, I'm beating myself here. Um I started as the swimmer eight in the late eighties. Um so I'm old. Um let's see, I I knew Brian Flowers back then. So he's not old. Um and let's see. Uh I I was lifeguard swim instructor back in the original pool. Original pool. And then I left, I went away to college and I came back. Um to admin uh right before the pandemic struck. And then we got shut down. And then I did food distribution. Um thankfully, he uh cut me around and um came back to admin. And then uh an opportunity came to be in senior services. And here I am. And I I hope I'm here to stay and this is where I need to be. So I feel like I've come full circle.
Thank you. And Karen?
Hello, well, geez, after all those stories, I feel sort of left out because I don't have any Daly City stories. I'm from Pacifica, so the other side of the hill. So um yes, I'm hired, was hired for the senior services specialist. And um just a little background about me, I've been working with senior services, um senior population for the past fifteen years. I was in Pacifica for ten years. Um I absolutely love seniors. I just, I'm just drawn to them. I don't know why. Uh my kids call me the senior whisperer, so they're just, they're just, they just draw to me. But um I'm really excited to be working here in Daly City with everybody. Everybody's been so nice and so sweet. I used to think Pacifica was number one, but I'm thinking Daly City's number one now. I mean, everybody is just like, it's been, it's been really like. It really honestly, and I'm not just saying this to say this, but it feels like a family. You know, it really feels tight and and really, I feel the love. So that's what I wanna tell everybody. And I also wanna say that um I got the opportunity to work also with the Samuel Merritt student nurses. Um cause we're doing assessments on our homebound seniors and to work with these nurses that are gonna be like working in the hospitals. It's just been, it's been an amazing ride for me because I never got that opportunity to do that in Pacifica and here I am getting this opportunity. Um so I just wanna say, that's where I am. I am excited, so excited to be here. Um I wanna see senior services grow. I want every senior to know about our senior services that we offer in every site. Um I don't want any senior sitting at home alone. I want them to come out and it comes socialize with us, socialize with their friends. Eat Opal's great food and just, just enjoy their life, you know, enjoy their life, you know, and have fun. Cause I like to have fun. So but that's me. I'm sorry, I don't have this big story about Daly City and I can make up one up though. I'm a good storyteller. I can say that. Oh yeah, no, I'm just kidding. But that's me. That's where I'm at and I'm very excited to be here. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. And that ends the director's report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody that presented. Congratulations on you guys' new positions. Uh moving forward, uh commissioner's report, uh would anybody like to report on anything?
I don't have an official report, but I I just wanna say, you know, it's just such a pleasure to meet everybody. And to just hear about everybody's backgrounds, um being so deeply rooted in Daly City. It's it's just amazing to know that these are the folks that are behind, you know, all of these programs. So you know, it's a pleasure meeting everyone and also um another welcome again to um our new commissioners.
Thank you, Christina. Yeah, um couple things, Denise. Uh I was wondering if there's a way we could add to the agenda next week. In item, um probably at the end for agenda building. So as a team, we could have a space. Um at the end of every meeting, if there's anything we'd wanna add to the next following month agenda. Is that possible, Denise?
I will be having a conversation with um Leilani and Steven to confirm whether I can put agenda building on the agenda. And so I'm happy to look into that.
Okay, awesome.
Great.
And then, other than that, I do wanna take a couple minutes since a lot of people's on this call right now. Um to thank everybody in Recreation Department for uh helping me get to where I'm at today, honestly. Um I didn't think Chair would be even something imaginable, but I remember in two thousand nine when I first started and volunteering for the football program. At Daniel Webster. Um Coach B was over there and it, that kinda kicked me off for like the next decade. Working almost every position from either what Recreator Three with Egardo and the OGs like Steve and Dave over at Westlake. Um to Bayshore with when Ray pulled me on board with the team and Jeff is over there, took care of me for years over there. Denise, being able to oversee everything, David, you know, all these people made an impact. And you know, I just wanna continue that these next years as I'm here in the commission. So I just wanted, since everyone's on this call right now, I just wanna uh shout them out and give them a thank you. But other than that, um anybody else?
Uh I just wanted to quickly say thank you uh for the, you know, I'm extremely honored for this opportunity and uh to join this amazing commissioning team. So uh thank you all and a special thank you to Councilwoman Jessica Manala for the nomination and uh look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Welcome to the commission.
May I go?
You go for it, Saul.
Thank you. Well, to begin, I just wanna say thank you to all. Um I really appreciate it. Uh Councilwoman D. Giovanni, very honored to, for you to give me this opportunity. And just like Jeff and Opal, like I just wanna say thank you because it was folks like y'all that maybe.
It looks like, it looks like you froze out. We'll come back to him if we can.
Should we wait? Hang on a s- should we hang on a second or?
We can come back.
Cool, sure thing. So yeah, we'll pause um on Saul until he gets back. Um so we'll move on towards announcements.
Sorry, he's like, he's back there.
Awesome.
I apologize, guy. I don't know what the heck is going on, but I just wanna say thank you uh as I was going back. Uh thank you. It was people like y'all that ultimately that were supporting youth like myself at that time. That really had a positive impact on 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 me and I'm sure many others. So I just wanna say thank you. Um and continuing with uh the mental wellness services, I do have a question about that. Because I'm I'm really interested in what was, what is taking place at one of the centers. And I was curious if those services are also happening at uh the Lincoln Community Center. And if they, if it's not, or are they connected in some way? Uh I'm just kinda curious on that.
So usually, um it's it's connected in a way because a lot of it, the network networking is usually done with the the congregate meal program. And as people, you know, inquire about other services, we we always refer them over to call the Active Adult Hotline. At eight oh one two. And um and it's been doing outreach for for both clients at both locations.
Great, thank you for that. Uh and I was also curious on regards to like the the tax uh uh. The tax program that is going on for the free service. Is there a tax income limit for that at both locations?
I don't think there's a, there's a limit on that. You mean like if you make a certain amount of money?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think there is. It's just, it's just a very simple type of tax form that they use. So basically, like if you have rental properties or you have like a lot of things that you need to write off and stuff, it's not basically, you you wouldn't use them. It's just basically for like seniors who have just like social security or you you file short form. That's the kind of the tax program it is.
Thank you for that information.
And and even though it's AARP, it's not limited to seniors.
Right.
Which is nice.
Okay, good. So and then, I just wanna say thank you.
Cool, awesome. Um so moving forward with today, tonight's agenda, uh we have announcements and communications.
Thank you very much. I have a big announcement. We have Spring Fun Day coming up, free event. And it's gonna be at Westlake Park on April sixteen, starting at nine AM. So you can join us for our annual egg hunt at Westlake Park. There's three sessions that will be offered based on the age group. TK, Kinder and for sixth grades. And then will also be a very special visit by this spring bunny. So come on down, April sixteenth at nine AM. Then the following weekend, I think it's the twenty-third. Come to the open house or whatever we're gonna call it. Come on down. You can have two days at Westlake Park. And then get to know this beautiful area. So thank you so much, Chair Ortiz.
Thank you, Denise. Uh and moving forward, uh we'll go on to public comments. Uh do we have any public comments for tonight?
So if you do, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Um we have three. Okay, as a reminder, uh you do have two minutes. I will put a time, oh, we have four. But we do have a timer uh that will put on screen um after two minutes. Um we'll let you finish off your comment. And we'll move on to the next person. So we're gonna go with Fabiola, please. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, so my uh my agenda actually was asking about Westmore Park. And um I just had a lot of questions regarding like its decaying state. And quite honestly, like listening to today's meeting, cause this is my first ever. And quite honestly, like listening to today's meeting, because this is my first ever meeting. I've never been to a town hall meeting at all. I've never gotten involved, but I'm a little saddened that I hear about like Lincoln Park thriving and Westmore Park is in decay. I hear about five hundred thousand dollars from Measure Q for senior services, but the seniors around my neighborhood have to go around a fence to be able to practice Tai Chi in Westmore Park. And I'm, I'm not understanding like who gets to pick and choose where that, that money is getting allocated at. And, um, I also, um, like I said, thank you for bearing with me. This is my first time at any meeting. I would like to get some further information on, um, basically what's going on at Westmore Park. Like the EIR and the budget for the last five years. And how much of the budget was actually allocated to the upkeep of that park? Because now that I'm hearing what's going on and how the, the rest of the city is thriving, I'm just not understanding why certain parts of the city or Lincoln Park has all of whatever was just presented going on. But there's other parts of the city that are in decay. Last, um, couple of months ago, there was a tree that fell. You, you still haven't fixed that fence. You haven't fixed that fence at all. Those tennis courts have been in disarray for more than five years. And I'm just wondering, when the city is bragging about all of this money, where is that money going to if it's not going to Westmore Park? Why are we not good enough for you guys to actually, uh, put some money into the local park here, when we're surrounded by three different schools?
I have a lot of questions now more than ever in sitting in this meeting, to be honest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Um, let's see, uh, next person I have is, uh, Mr. Nick Otre Pinti. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, um, uh, first off, I want to say, uh, as somebody who's a, a former employee of Park and Rec, um, before his rec and library, librarian rec. Um, it's good to hear a lot of the things that, you know, our department's continuing to do, the city's doing, you know, different places. And and I want to say that, you know, when I'm hearing all these things too, um, it's really important, um, given what I'm hearing too from other, you know, people in the community that we think about all of our green spaces, especially Cerro Monte del Rey and Westmore Park. Um, Westmore Park is, um, one of those places that I think has been neglected for very long. Um, as somebody on the school board, I was not aware that Westmore Park, uh, was under the jurisdiction of the school district, but noticing that it has fallen off essentially, um, in transition between the city and the district. I think it's our responsibility to really do our community justice and make sure that we restore our park and our green spaces. And, um, and, and a big part of that is making sure that we're involved in the community's decisions. I know it's a big issue right now. It's been in news media outlets. We have a lot of youth and our students and families, um, the community speak up. And basically, um, say that they really want to keep Westmore Park alive and Cerro Monte del Rey, um, for what it is. It's a community center. It has sports and recreational facilities, um, acts as a cultural and community center, and of course has our, our city's only community garden. Um, these are all things I know we could build with, with the city, um, the preliminary plan that was, um, presented by the district, which I am not in favor of. I've, um, opposed because it's incomplete and it's inadequate. And in fact, um, is looking just to build, um, unaffordable luxury rate housing instead of doing so for our community. So, um, I want to see, um, our rec, our librarian rec department play a role in that and really advise, um, the city and the district on how to build in some community benefits that ceremony really deserves, ceremony area, and of course, a Westmore area and our entire city. Um, because we have a lot of potential in these places and they should be used for community benefits and community purposes first and foremost. And if we build any housing, that should be secondary because we need affordable housing, but none of the current plan actually seeks to do that. And I think it's a huge opportunity and, um, something that we have, uh, I think much more potential to have a say in and build if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have, uh, Ms. Sabrina Brennan. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, um, appreciate it. So, um, I'm here tonight. Uh, I'm gonna read a little bit from a recent letter that was sent, um, to the city council on February seventeenth. From the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter, I'm co-chair of the Equity Committee. I'm also, um, co-founder of the Committee for Equity and Women Surfing, founder for Surf Equity, founder for Sport Equity, and, um, thanks for your time. So if the density at Cerro Monte del Rey was doubled, then the footprint would be reduced by half and the project would still achieve the same unit potential. This would allow for nine acres of green space. The garden and trees could be preserved as a county park for Daily City. The park could be co-managed by the Association of Ramatou Shaloni as recommended by the California Natural Resources Agency. We urge the city to use its authority over public health, safety and welfare to fill essential needs in Daily City for more public parklands. This can be realized by requiring the doubling of density at the current unit potential. This minor change to the Cerro Monte del Rey plan will mitigate air quality, traffic and decreased open space problems that will result from the current design. Cerro Monte del Rey is a ninety percent market rate housing project. Please include at least fifty-nine percent affordable housing, including very low income and low income and moderate housing as allocated by RENA, which is the regional housing, um, allotment. There's a lot more to the letter, um, but I'm gonna run out of time. So thank you.
Uh, thank you for your comments. I'm sorry. We will be moving on to, uh, Glenn, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Glenn, also grew up and still reside in Daily City, which I acknowledge is on Ramatou Shaloni territory. I wanted to bring up the topic of the Daily City Community Garden at Cerro Monte del Rey because it too has served the community as a recreational space. I honestly don't know what it's going to take for you, you members of the Daily City Council to step in and do something about how the school district is behaving. They've been retaliating against community members, including youth whose artwork, which was forcibly removed under the leadership of the school board. Um, what should have been, what should have been obvious from the gate is just how desperately Daily City residents need these spaces. But at this point, I wonder if that even means anything to y'all. We're talking about recreation and wellness, and yet we seem to be normalizing the complete opposite by allowing the school board to just commit harmful acts against the people who actively enjoy these spaces for self-care to build with community and connect with nature. Can we just please not take these things for granted? Can we please not wait till we experience all the horrendous effects of for-profit developments? Hit us, you know, hit us in the gut to finally decide something needs to be done? Why does every issue have to be addressed with a reactionary approach? Address the root cause. I don't know how many times that has to be said. The video we just saw, the photos and the testimonials, testimonials we just heard tonight provide a great example of why community spaces are so treasured. Just imagine that, where they intend on building their so-called market rate apartments, but outdoors. That would be beautiful. That is how you treat and respect the community. That is how you foster a healthy environment for the community. So save the garden. Thank you.
Uh, Egardo, any more comments?
Yes, uh, we have, uh, sorry if I butcher this, Hibba.
Oh, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I, uh, my name is Hibba. For those of you who are listening, just to current, print the correct pronunciation of my name.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, no worries. Thanks for, uh, commenting on that though. But I actually was a previous student at Westmore High School. I've lived in Daily City in my entire life. And I am actually a member of four Daily City, if you guys are familiar with that org. I'm here to urge the Recreation Commission to take a stance with the community in order to preserve Daily City's only community garden and Westmore Park. When conducting a survey amongst community members and local students, nearly all of our survey respondents emphasized a need for both green spaces and community spaces. Please advise the city council to push for a revision of the Cerro Monte del Rey development, which entails the demolition of the garden and building on top of Westmore Park. I am urging the Recreation Commission to support and join our youth and community to protect and promote youth programming in green spaces, libraries and recreational areas that our city needs to, needs so much for mental and physical health. We supported a youth organized rally at the Community Garden slash SDR just this past Friday, and they demanded a preservation of these spaces for them. One youth described the community garden as an escape from the isolation brought by two years of a pandemic. Another youth stated that it was necessary for, it was a necessary space to have after school after staring at a computer screen for hours. Their testimonies speak for themselves and are able to view on Instagram as well as news outlets. Our community does not want a new garden. We want the garden that has been cultivated and loved by our community for over twenty years. We're taking a strong stance against the gentrification of the sacred green space, against the environmentally racist policies that allow the space to even be considered for demolition, against the discrimination and retaliation of JUHSD gets community members in order for them to push this development. We want to share the voices of our youth and community about Cerro Monte del Rey and Westmore Park with these demands presented to the JUHS, already presented to JUHSD and the city council. We demand all hands off the garden, which includes helping all proposed closures and the development, all security additions and the immediate removal of excess security measures. The Da- the Daily City Library and Recreation Commission should support and join youth and community. Oh my God, sorry, skipped over something. But we also demand an end to housing projects that bulldoze public parks and replace them with luxury apartments, buildings and office parks that lead to gentrification. It doesn't help our community. Actually, it hurts us a lot and does very little to fund or support publicly funded community services that our city needs. Our youth and community are stepping up to save Westmore Park, keep sports and recreational programs and our city's only community garden at Cerro Monte del Rey. This commission has a say in that and should use its voice to make a positive change in our community.
Two minutes are up. Thank you.
All right, thank you for, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
And that is it for public comment.
All right, thank you, Egardo, and thank you, community members of Daily City. Um, if there are no more public comments for this evening, uh, I would like to adjourn this meeting. Um, and see you guys next month.
Ask for a motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Can a motion to, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting? Sorry, first time. All right, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, you have a motion.
Uh, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. Uh, this meeting is now adjourned. Uh, we'll see you guys next month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a beautiful night.
Thank you.